Okay, good evening and welcome. This is the October twenty first. Meeting of the school committee called the meeting to order five P M. This meeting is being both audio and video recorded. I would ask them, folks, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Amy, if you could start us, please.
Valenta.
William Crawford.
Antonella Rochelle.
Gregory Thompson.
Sarah Trillo.
Dana Blair, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Sports Secretary.
Okay, excellent. We have meetings for approval. I would entertain a motion, please.
To approve, this is number ten, twenty four minutes from the joint meeting with town council.
Second.
Um. I was not here for that meeting, so I will abstain.
Okay. Motion made in second. Is any other discussion on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, and one abstention, zero.
Wasn't that the meeting where?
Yeah, William, that's when we.
You would have.
So you could abstain from that. That was your, the meeting we, uh.
September tenth one?
Yeah, yeah, that's where you were nominated.
You came on on eleventh.
Yes, so that.
Oh, extension for that?
Yes.
Okay, so three, zero, two, Samantha, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, next one.
Move to approve the October seventh, twenty twenty four executive session meeting minutes.
Made by Antonella.
Second.
By Sarah, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay.
Aye.
And one abstention, four, zero, one.
And move to approve the October seventh, twenty twenty four regular session meeting.
Motion made by Antonella.
Second.
Second by Sarah, discussion. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, that unanimous. Samantha, for those.
Welcome.
Meeting and subcommunications. Or would you like?
Uh, none at this time.
Okay, it's no.
At this time.
None at this time. Man, you're just in time. You have something for us?
The thing I have is, uh, junior semi happy in Saturday night. It was a pretty good success, a lot of fun.
Where was it at?
Uh, out in Springfield.
Nice.
Great turnout.
Nice. Okay, we have an opportunity for visitors to see, seeing none. We have the need for an MIA middle school waiver for the East Lomond High School athletic program district.
Our athletic director.
Um, so a couple of updates on fall sports. Happy to say it's probably the best season I've ever experienced as an athletic director. Uh, one hundred percent of our teams have qualified for the Western Mass tournament.
Wow.
And it looks like potentially a hundred percent of our teams. Potentially qualify for the state tournament. The weather's been great, participation's been great, our fans have been outstanding, or parents have been great. It's been very enjoyable as an athletic director. Uh, so I want to thank the public for that. Um, looking ahead to the winter, we do have, um, about four different sports. I'm looking for an eighth grade waiver for all of these sports. The school committee approved a waiver for last year. Um, when we asked for those waivers. The participation numbers with the high school athletic program are in your file with numbers that have registered in the past four years. So that was something that Mr. Smith had asked me to include in your packet so you can see what the registration numbers have looked like during the past four athletic seasons. And they're pretty steady over those past four years. Um, the sports that we typically ask for waivers in are more specialized sports. So the four winter sports that we're looking for a waiver in are swimming, ski team, wrestling, and ice hockey. On, in your packet, you'll see the number that the MIA suggests trying for a waiver for. Um, and if we went considerably over that number, then we would withdraw the waiver. But the process is getting school committee approval, getting local athletic director approval, and then getting MIA approval. Um, so the first ones are for swimming. We're anticipating around eleven participants in both, both boys and girls swimming. Um, and we're looking for just an eighth grade waiver where those participants would just participate on the varsity team. For the ski team, that's probably the program that has the least number of participants right now. Um, we're anticipating around four on each team. So that we're opening up for the second year in a row to seventh and eighth graders to potentially ski with the varsity team. Our wrestling numbers have been really good the past couple of years. We're considering ending that program about six years ago, but our numbers have been uh, in the fourteen to twenty range the past couple of years. So we're looking to open that up to eighth graders again this year like we did last year. And then ice hockey is unique. That would just be a JV only waiver. And this would be the first year in a couple of years that we would be able to. We're looking to fill a full schedule with our JV teams. The past couple of years, we've done some, a small number of games with our JV team. But we're looking to do a full schedule with that. Um, so our, our anticipated numbers are pretty high. Uh, around twenty eight or so. But this would be JV only, and those eighth graders would, based on MIA rules, would not be allowed to participate on the varsity team for ice hockey.
So the Marlins program is pretty robust, as far as I know. They have a huge team. Any idea why only eleven out of four grades are signing up for high school?
There's a good question. It does go up and down. Um, I think with the new pool coming, I think those numbers will go back up. Um, I don't have a definite answer for you. I do know that there's a couple of swimmers that do not swim for high school and do choose to swim for club teams. Um, so I think we're losing a couple swimmers there. And I think swimmers maybe choosing to do indoor track or maybe choosing to do basketball or other sports besides just swimming. Um, but I, I don't have a definite answer for why that.
No, I know, obviously, because then we could fix it, right? But yeah, I'm just shocked at the size of the team being so small as former swims too. And then for skiing, if we're down four or lower, is there a thought of perhaps rolling that program up?
I think it's definitely something that I consider from year to year. The good thing that we have going for us right now is the skiers that we have are very committed. They're very successful. We consistently put top three ski team members in the Western Mass races. Uh, even though our numbers are low, the kids who are participating are some of the best in the region. Um, we have very committed coaches the best fifteen years. Um, and they actively um, try to get the younger seventh and eighth grade skiers and work with them. But it is something that I'm concerned about, not necessarily this year, but maybe two, three years from now about that number. So having the seventh and eighth grade waiver, hopefully, we can potentially recruit some seventh and eighth graders that may not normally ski. And hopefully, the numbers in the future would benefit from that, too.
Because they ski four days a week, three days, four days?
Uh, so they practice at least once a week and they compete typically twice a week. Um, so it's usually two races per week, at least one practice per week, sometimes more.
Do we put them on a full bus if?
So we, we do, um, we do a smaller bus, um, but it is a contracted out bus. They we contract that out way in advance to get a really good price on that bus.
With Michael's?
Yes, and they give us a reduced rate for, uh, booking so far in advance with them.
Questions? Okay, I would take a motion to approve the waivers.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the MIA middle school waivers for the ELHS athletic program.
What sport?
Yeah, fish.
Boy swim, girl swim, boy ski, girl ski, wrestling, and ice hockey.
Excellent motion made by Antonella.
Second.
Amy, any other discussion? Motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Here's five, zero. Thanks, Kevin. Okay, moving right along, we have the superintendent's twenty-three, twenty-four evaluation. Folks had a chance to look that over from last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Discussion.
Hi, let's know when I took a opportunity to review our MCAS data once more, and I think the only question I would put to the committee is under the first goal. Um, instead of having it as goal achieved, I would ask that we move that to goal partially achieved. Student learning goals. Only because there are six DESI targets. I'm just making sure I'm counting right. One, two, three. Six, and hit three out of the six.
What page are you on?
Page two. Where it says, uh, team goal slash department name, teaching and learning. There are some asterisks there. It says DESI updated targets.
Oh, it's there.
So we.
Second page.
Did not meet for non-high school ELA. We did not meet for non-high school math. And we did not meet the DESI target for science, I believe.
I think we met it at high school.
High school science, we did.
Yeah.
High school science and middle school and, uh, non-high school science, we did. I believe it was also math at the high school. We were supposed to be at five oh eight and we came in at five oh five. That was ELA, sorry. And then high school math was five oh five.
And we'll get new targets this year? Is that the, how that works?
We set the targets every year.
Based on what we achieved this year?
No.
No, they just, they'll keep matching them.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it doesn't even matter.
And I always say that too, because in, in fairness, when we first talked about this with, uh, Mr. Smith, and we talked about bringing it into bringing data more comprehensively across the district into goals, whether it was administrators or educators, Mr. Smith rightfully so said if we're going to put that in other people's evaluations, then it should be in mine as well, because we want overseeing everything. So I think in part, we have to also like monitor that and continue to be able to give partially for that. I think.
Okay.
I would disagree with you. I, I thought this could still be categorized in the goal achieved section. I think we've made substantial progress as a district. I think that the data shows that. I, I don't obviously disagree with you, but there's certain components that we still have some work to do, but I would, I would make the argument that we've made substantial progress to justify marking that goal as having been achieved.
Do we know how often districts hit all those targets consistently? Does that happen?
I did put in the, um, in the shared folder, that's the, um, dart comparison for all the districts that we are compared to. So it just, it doesn't necessarily give you that exact answer, but it gives you how we did, uh, versus districts that else. DESI compares us to, which was pretty comparable.
Yeah.
In terms of last year, we were probably middle of the pack, definitely on the high school level. It looked like we outperformed most of the, the districts that, um, outperformed us last year. Um, three through eight, as I think Mr. Trudeau was remarking on, we're still probably very close to them.
Right.
The one area that, um, I was actually, uh, very excited about was in many of the areas where improved, you saw a reduction in, um, not meeting expectations or failure. So anyway, so at least we're moving towards the left, which is the left of the graph, if you will, which, uh, is something that's exciting.
We have, I didn't, we did improve, but we're, I don't, I still don't feel like we're, we're, where we really want to be yet, but we haven't.
I would agree. I, we want to consistently improve.
Yes.
This is simply, you know, an evaluation of last year, not necessarily saying that we're sealing, you know, putting a ceiling in place.
And it's not necessarily an evaluation of, it's an evaluation of the totality of life, not one individual person.
And I think that just looking at what the data is saying, I don't know if we can say that we're making substantial progress if we've only met half. Is that what the numbers were? Well, what I'm saying is.
DESI actually, we made substantial progress.
The marking on the evaluation is goal achieved. All I'm saying is we didn't achieve the but we did make progress towards the goal. I just think rather than saying goal achieved, it should say goal partially achieved. But that's, that's just me. Like, if we don't have data that substantiates that we met i- in its entirety, then it should be goal partial. But that's my, and so that's the only piece in terms of the entirety of the evaluation that I'm bringing forward as a question for the group.
I'm fine with that.
Other discussion, topics, questions? When you say you're fine with that, Gordon, you, that's, you're understanding that, that it might be a partially achieved, and if we're not.
And we moved it to partially achieved, uh, with student learning goal. This is how I was looking at it.
I wasn't changing the overall rating.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Like, just that one goal, I think.
And, and I think that's fine.
Any other thoughts or changes? Do you want to make a motion to that effect in terms of approving the whole, uh, thing and?
To approve. Superintendent's twenty-three, twenty-four evaluation with the one adjustment under progress towards scoo- student learning goals to shift it from goals achieved to goals partially achieved.
Motion made by Sarah.
Second.
Second, my, no, I have a special. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay.
Stay.
And abstentions, one abstention?
Yep.
Two abstentions?
Um, no, I'm, I'm okay with the yes vote, as long as Gordon's fine with that. I'll.
Yes. Your one, Tim? Thank you. Work this here, though. It's certainly progress made, wanting to do that. Well, thank you for your leadership, Gordon, as always.
The team effort, yeah, totally. It's true, it's a, the role program with this, a lot of components to it, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You.
Okay, we have a capital plan, five-year plan in front of us today.
Okay, so actually, um, at least for next year, it, it's been trimmed down quite a bit. You know, from the last meeting that, um, there are a few projects that right now are ongoing. Um, we have the modular project, uh, that we hope to get out to bid relatively soon, so we can actually break ground. This is a modular project, I'm sorry, at Mountain View, so we could actually break ground as soon as school gets out. Um, DPW is working on that. Uh, I believe with Tianbond, get those documents ready. Um, we're waiting on, and that's why it's highlighted in here under fiscal year twenty-six, uh, the response from the Mass School Building Authority regarding their accelerated repair program and the Maple Shade roof replacement. Um, hopefully, that's going to be, that decision will be out within the next two weeks, and we'll have an idea going forward. Um, the reason that it's in, it stays in fiscal year twenty-six is because although the vote was supported by the school committee and also by the town capital planning committee and also the town council with the overall budget, funding would still need to be voted into place, should we be invited into the accelerated repair. I mean, that funding would be still looking at that figure of two point nine million dollars. Um, with the idea that, uh, they would recalculate, maybe being the MSBA, as to how much would be eligible for reimbursement, the percentage of re- eligible reimbursement.
Probably around half, right?
We, right now, in the current project are at fifty-six point six percent, so unless demographics have changed drastically, I would say we'd stay in the upper portion of the fifty percent.
Did you say if they voted on how to fund the other half?
No, they.
Talked about.
No, they, um.
But that's not allocated yet.
Not allocated, correct.
This would be part of this year's capital.
Right. They would need to, um, town council would need to, should we be invited in, commit funding, the two point nine million. And then.
Yeah.
We would enter into, as we've done with other projects with the MSBA, enter into a funding agreement with the MSBA.
And then the MSBA gives the town back the money?
Correct.
You can do it as you go through.
Right.
You just have to, um, submit reimbursement. I think it's in quantities of twenty thousand or more.
Right, yep.
Oh. And when?
As you go.
Find out. When do we find out if?
Hopefully in the next two weeks.
Right.
Because if I understood it correctly, they're looking to invite people to the November board meeting. Um, if you're invited into the accelerated repair.
These, uh, synthetic turf, was there discussion on the funding for that?
So, um.
In the past, there was. Yeah.
Yes, so the synthetic turf, um, that not only was approved here last year by the tour company, then it went to the town capital planning committee, um, and the discussion was very supportive there to continue to move forward. Two ways in terms of funding it. One, a certain portion possibly supported through a community preservation, um, grant. With the rest of it, at least this was at the time of the discussion, I think coming through, um, free cash. That was the discussion at the time. Ultimately, we recommend it as a fiscal year twenty-five project. But I think as the budget was discussed at the financial oversight committee level, um, it was taken out of the projects. So that's why it's back on for fiscal year twenty-six, so we don't lose track. Um, but I should say, and I apologize, I was going out of order with the highlight. But you have three projects for fiscal year twenty-six. You have the parking lot redesign, which is a hundred and ninety-four thousand. That's a, a more specific quote that we've gotten through Tianbond and DPW. And then the turf replacement is, um, an escalation of fifteen percent, which is what DPW is putting out for projects where they're not getting specific quotes on. Um, so we added the fifteen percent there from last year. So you have three projects, one of which is, uh, through the MSBA.
We know the, what's, is it actually designed or is that for the cost of, for the actual?
This is, uh, three ninety-four would be to take up the, the islands, um, to re-stripe and repave. Um, I think that's.
How many more spots would we get?
That's a good question. I do not have that answer.
That would be important.
Mm-hmm.
Cause that's. We've done some work to it, but the island in the middle where those trees are, we could probably put another twenty spots in, and they must have some other ideas, I'm hoping.
I think in the back, they would like to get rid of both those two islands and, um, stripe it differently, so you can pick up spots there, maybe on either side of, of the island.
Um, are they really sore on parking over there?
Yes, park in the playground.
Oh, yeah.
Which is coming along nicely, the other one. I, I was there for soccer this weekend.
Oh, really?
And, uh, it looks halfway done of, you know. Some, of course, good portion done. It looks like everything's there, so, yeah.
Renee will give a little bit of an update on November second.
Nice. You got something to say?
Uh, yeah, duh, 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 duh. So I think it's great, but I think we should move a couple more things into year one, because we know how the process works, and these are all large tickets. And I know they are further out, but we have three projects for a thousand dollars, so we might be lucky enough to get one or two of them just be as we asked. Whereas the big projects are tougher to get sometimes. So we have, uh, the, the kitchen hood at Mountain View and the, um, replace smoke hatch at Berchlin Park and the, uh, terrazzo floor at Maple Shade. I know it's a little bit out of order, but I think strategically it's so, because if we don't get an MSABA for some reason, we have to push that one off a year, then we're down to the two projects.
So just a word of caution, um, because they are sitting much further out.
Yep.
They, all they've received over the years is that whatever the DPW price escalation. Last year, I think it was five percent. Year before, it was, yeah, like three percent. This year, based on all the changes, the cost of living and so forth, it went to fifteen percent.
At least they've been price escalated to then, is that what you're saying?
That's what happens, um, with the ones that are further out than the next fiscal year, just so they were in the ballpark and.
Oh, it's more than?
It's cheaper than this.
It may or, may or may not be.
Right.
May or may not.
So maybe twenty-five percent, is that what you're saying? Because it's three years out, is that, is that how I'm reading you?
No.
Year one is fifteen.
You're not, everything got fifteen percent this year. So last year's five-year plan.
Yeah.
Everything got moved. All I'm saying is that, you know, you take something like the Meadowbrook parking lot. They went and talked with Tianbond and got a much more precise quote on that. Like, that's less than fifteen percent of what we had last year.
See.
Um, the turf, we just added fifteen percent to that. Um, and then the rest of them across the board, because these aren't projects that, um, the principals have been discussing for nine years.
Yeah.
We add it, we continued so that in the ballpark, um, when you get to that year.
What do you think about those two or three items, Gordon? In terms of, um, asking to see if we can get them funded? Or would you not want to? The ones that are under a hundred thousand, just to get some lower number ones. See, we know how it goes. We're gonna.
I mean, certainly, the terrazzo floor, I think is one that, um.
Is in need.
Yeah, you probably need shade, uh, in a few schools, but, uh, certainly that, that would be one you'd look at.
Yeah.
I just, um, I'm sure, I'm hoping the cost is in the ballpark.
Get done what we can.
Okay.
Uh, what about that smoke hatch on the stage at Berchlin? That is smoke hatch.
Um.
Are they smoking in the stage and blowing it out the hatch?
I think, um, it's something that tr- is triggered on the fire alarm and it opened. Um, that's a, that's a guess.
Let's hold that one off then. How about the, it's not very interesting. Uh, the kitchen hood at Mountain View.
So that was something that is, has been recommended as we, when we did the facility study, I think for, I think everyone's got a kitchen hood somewhere. Um.
Now, we wouldn't look to replace that with, um, food lunch?
Service?
Yeah.
Possibly.
Is there feasible funding for that?
There is feasible funding.
A year.
I'm, go back to Lori's, um, list that she had and have a conversation with her about that.
All right, let's not put that one on.
Nation for you.
So maybe just move the terrazzo floor and we can push for that. How about that? And then we'll have the other three. Are you okay with that? Our folks with that?
I think that's.
I just think three is light task, you know, captain. Last, I know they're big numbers, Chris.
What are the other three?
Uh, the parking lot redesign at Meadowbrook.
Yeah.
The, uh, Maple Shade roof replacement with MSBA funding.
Yeah.
And, uh, the.
Oh, right there.
And it's a good chance that the turf gets moved again.
Well, but we, if there's money in, um, community preservation, if they could take half of that, it would be substantial. And it's gonna have to get done. If we're gonna have a brand new high school.
Right, we'll need to get done, and, and that's.
Didn't we say that we were gonna do that after the high school was built?
I think that was the, the discussion that took place, but we were not involved in that discussion.
It's not our.
Oh.
We. No, no, I think that, that was the discussion.
Took it out underneath us.
Given the, the amount of use it's gonna get over these, probably two plus years, because even, um, in twenty-six and twenty-seven, you're still redesigning the fields here.
Right.
In some cases, we may have to be, right, because of either sod or seed.
Right.
Um, so you could, you could be looking at three years plus.
Okay, so.
But I, I'll leave it on, yeah.
Okay.
I think we leave it on and have that discussion again, because even if we fund it this year, it'll still be another full school year before.
You won't get it until, they wouldn't start working until probably the summer.
Right. So the three and then the, uh, Maple Shade terrazzo floor, can we move that over?
I just make, uh, I just want to remind you what Gordon said, that ninety-three, four, sixty is not, and it does not have that fifteen percent on there.
No, it does have the fifteen.
It does have. I'm sorry, then I misunderstood.
It's not a, it's not a quote from a flooring company.
Got it.
Originally, most likely came from the facility study, which we finished in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen.
And we've just escalated.
And then we've escalated it since, yeah.
Perfect.
Okay, I'd, I'd take a motion to accept the five-year capital plan with the one change, moving the ninety-three thousand and change to, uh, for the Maple Shade terrazzo floor repair to, uh, year one.
All right.
Mr. Martin, happy.
I make the motion to accept the twenty, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five district five-year capital plan with the one change of moving the shade for repair to year one.
Excellent motion made by Amy. Okay, second by Williams, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed nay, that carries five to zero. On our way. Oh, who's doing this? You?
They was saying.
I know.
Yeah.
You're doing the best.
Oh, yeah.
Best.
I do feel bad for you because they moved it back to Friday afternoon.
Saw that.
And it's, so the delegate meeting is three P M, Friday afternoon.
Didn't they move it to the beginning?
They had moved it to the beginning.
That's what I thought.
Well, never really left, right? Is that what happened?
And then, well, I don't know if everybody left.
At the end, I think they tried to move it to the beginning because they left.
Well, people, yeah, so sadly, it, it seems like. Town when, by the time they get to that meeting. Everybody's gone.
Yeah.
Enders have pulled out.
Yeah.
On Friday.
I don't know why they moved it back to.
I don't either.
Although I will, it was well attended, I thought it was pretty well attended last year. It was, people were trickling out at the end, but started off be strong with a lot of decisions.
Another ten? Typically, we would go through all of them and decide how Amy would vote. Representative.
But don't we typically only read the therefore be it resolved?
You on, you wanna take a bite out? Yeah, go for it, Amy, then you can be.
You want me to?
So Resolution One, development of an alternative to the high stakes MCAS test.
You want me to just read that?
Yeah, then you can go right down to Massachusetts to develop a wider, more comprehensive or consensus pill strategy for an evaluation system. With meaningful input for legitimate stakeholders, the MCAS urges the state legislature to launch a comprehensive evaluation. To investigate the extent of biases pertaining to MCAS tests and make these results public. And the MCAS urges Massachusetts to enact a moratorium on MCAS testing effective immediately. Wow. So I know where you're.
High stakes alternative, an alternative to high stakes.
Alternative to high stakes, yep. So a motion in favor would be in favor of the resolution. Or a motion against would be against the resolution, right? So folks have a comprehension of that. This is similar to our discussion later. I don't know how to vote on this one. Oh, Brittany, you want an alternative? You like the alternative?
I mean, it's, I don't know what it is.
Yes, create it.
It'd probably be port something portfolio based or something, right?
What do you think about that?
Oh, I think it's great.
Okay.
I'm going with E L is not gonna be in support of Resolution One in general, but.
But you are.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah. Well, are you so sure that E L is not?
I'm making.
We haven't even finished the discussion yet. The problem is the moratorium on MCAS testing before they even develop a new one, right?
That's why this isn't really telling us anything.
Yeah.
And it's not just high school.
I don't know. I mean, it depends on what the alternative would be.
So I can also bring, I mean, I can bring questions as well.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's usually like robust discussion.
Really?
Oh, yeah, about all of these resolutions. I can. You know.
Now, why, if they have discussions, do people change their vote though? I mean, why have discussion if there's no already predetermined?
I don't know. I mean, some, I, I think that's the idea. I think the idea is to have a conversation. And some people maybe would change their mind or not.
Yeah.
People do get really passionate though, when you're, you know, especially if it's, you know, a specific school committee that brought it forward. Somebody from that school committee will usually make. An impassioned statement about it.
This came from the MASC board of directors, which is surprising in itself. Right?
Really?
Our folks, ready to go? Antonella's still. I can see it. Good. So a I vote would be in the affirmative to, for our delegate to vote in the affirmative, and nay would be to vote in the negative. So all those in favor of Resolution Number One, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. And those opposed abstain, where'd you go, William?
I'm kind of sure where I'm at.
It's not gonna matter, you can abstain.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna abstain for this one.
Right.
Four, uh, three, one, zero, Sam. Okay.
Wouldn't be one, three?
Three, four, three, oh yeah, I'm sorry.
One.
Thank you. Yes, one.
One, three, one.
Yes, thank you, Gordon. You know what I meant.
Sam probably had it.
No, you fixed it, thank you. Okay.
Okay, Resolution Two is to increase attendance age, whereas compulsory school attendance refers to minimum. Required by each state in which a student must be enrolled in an attending public school or some equivalent accredited education program defined by law. And this go down, therefore, it resolve that MASC recommends Massachusetts Legislature increase the compulsory age.
Okay, our folks on that one? Still mauling here, Antonella?
I just want to make sure I understand this. So if the kid's seventeen or eighteen, don't have to go to school.
No, they would have to go to school now. They wouldn't be eligible to drop.
I'm saying right now.
Right, right now.
The dropout age.
Okay.
Surprised they have this one in here and that's something about kindergarten being compulsory. Yeah.
On server. They went up, okay. All those in favor of Resolution Number Two, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay, say nay.
Storage of firearms, I believe this one is being brought back. I think it was a real. Hot button issue last year, and I don't think that there was any.
What's up?
I said Framingham School Committee.
Yeah, and I, and I don't think it, I, I don't remember exactly what happened, but it was, I think it got tabled, yeah, it was a really. Passionate discussion, so whereas safety and wellbeing of our students, teachers and staff is top priority in schools and keeping them safe. From the threat of gun violence should be the responsibility of all adult stakeholders at each of our school sites. And then. Down to the end, therefore be it resolved that MASC recommends all district, all districts direct their superintendent and staff to create an appropriate communication. Importance of firearms, of secure firearm storage and protect children and teens from unauthorized access to unsecured firearms. And their legal obligations consistent with the Massachusetts State Safe Storage Law. Furthermore, be it resolved that MASC urges other communities to work with their local law enforcement agencies, agencies, nonprofit organizations. To collaborate and increase efforts to inform district parents and guardians of their obligations. Regarding secure storage of firearms and. It makes sense, but last year I remember people getting, you know, the logistical piece of it. School committee members being very concerned about liability and how do we enforce this and what does this look like in a, on a practical? You know, it seems like, yeah, that makes good sense, but then people did bring up a lot of concerns about, yeah, but how does this actually look in practice?
They wanna put guns in the school.
No, no.
No, they want, they want, no, they want it to be the responsibility of the school district to put literature. To out, to out all of our district families about safely storing firearms and they're, and they're proposing that that is a responsibility. Of the school district to in, inform parents of their, of their responsibility, their gun owners.
Yeah, which you can understand because a reminder to store your gun safely. May someday be the difference.
It could.
You know?
I'm in favor of it, but I'm just sharing that last year it was, it was, people were very, very upset about this.
We think the state could come up with some universal literature.
I feel like.
I feel like, flip, heaven forbid, you put out literature and a child reads that literature and goes and touches a gun that wasn't properly stored. To say if they were checking for safety.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And now, I, I don't know, if they want something like this, then it should be like in the wellness framework or something like that. It should be like.
But I don't know if it should be coming from.
Well, where's it gonna come from? That's the issue. Can the state mandate, can the nutritionists hand out literature? They can do it to schools.
Universal way to get it out collectively. Um, and I don't, I don't know how.
Yeah, so maybe, yeah. Maybe the state could come up with something.
Be nice if there was some literature or something. Okay, so maybe I, I can.
That's part of the.
Answer.
Yeah. I mean, because I, I'm of the theory that more literature never shouldn't hurt, but I also see your points here that it brings up the topic.
And then if that goes home.
Then go check.
Like I think about even like fire safety, like that sparks huge conversation at a young age, like are smoke detectors working? And like, there's a big difference between going and pushing the smoke detector button, minus the latter. And there is to a child and coming home with a piece of paper that's talking about gun safety. And if they know there's a gun in the home, heaven forbid. I don't know, this to me just seems like it's, it's a tough one. Again, in principle, yes, like I think. The idea is great, but I don't know that it's on the schools to be passing that out.
What do you think, Manny? You got a thought on it? Yeah.
I agree with Sarah that could raise that issue.
To younger kids, yeah.
We do have a pretty strong partnership with the East Long Meadow Police Department, but it's generally reactive. Um, more around any, anything that may have been brought to us by children or families. And then we work to provide education mostly from the police department, because it's not our expertise.
Right, right.
Yep.
But we often are the conduit of communication between the two to at least start that process. But it has been more reactive, although more common than you would think.
Yeah. Okay, so Freddie. All those in favor of Resolution Number Three, safe storage of firearms, please say. We make, did we make motions before? Why am I feeling like this is off? Did I, is this how I've been doing it?
We've done the.
I thought we just talked about it and we were just like, all right, we're gonna say yes. I'm writing down.
We do.
Oh, we did vote? All right.
I don't know if we need a motion to do it. That's all I'm asking.
No. We generally have.
Okay.
Just like you're doing, all in favor of.
Thank you, I just felt odd doing it, thank you. So then affirmative, all those in favor of Resolution Number Three, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Nay, that motion. Bills, one to four. Or.
Stop Arm Surveillance Act and enforcement penalties. Whereas it is against the law in Massachusetts to pass a stopped school bus with the stop arm extended and flashing lights. Student passengers embark into. As witnessed by a police officer, the penalties for passing a stopped school bus are minimal. The danger to passengers is extraordinary and can prove fatal. Therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls on the Massachusetts Legislature to enact legislation. To pass into law the ability for cities and towns to install on all school buses live digital video detection monitoring systems. For the purpose of enforcing violations against the owner of a motor vehicle. Whose vehicle failed to stop for a school bus when required to do so by law.
This comes from the Peabody School Committee. I've seen it happen, I've seen people pass buses with this stop sign out and a student was killed here. Thirty plus years ago, probably, crossing from a school bus, so it's certainly a real, real thing, so. I'd be in favor of it. Any other discussion? You're thinking about it, Antonella, you started.
I am.
Didn't we have something like this before in Massachusetts? Where, where folks were running red lights and they were getting tickets. And as a result, they were, you know, a lot of people were fighting the tickets on and so forth, because they felt that it wasn't. Ticket based on not having an actual police officer witness the actual act.
Doing it off the cameras that are on.
Exactly.
So I, I know in Rhode Island they have that. I, I don't know Massachusetts specifically.
I thought Massachusetts fought back on.
They used to have the, they used to give tickets for speeding on the Mass Pike based on your transponder. From one transponder reading to the next, but I know they stopped that.
No, they, they actually even go one so far as actually giving you tickets if you were, if you arrived at the destination. Vastly you should have.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Your average speed.
Average speed, the ticket, you're, you're, you're getting a ticket based off of that.
I think they stopped doing that, though.
Exactly.
So this would be up to the legislature to make it legal, I guess, would be the point.
I mean, I guess it doesn't, it wouldn't hurt to, to at least make the suggestion.
I mean, we have the technology. What do you, Manny? Yeah, bring it forward, yeah.
If it deters one person from doing it and with the technology we have available, I, I, I mean, obviously there will be a cost associated, but. What's available out there now, I wouldn't think it would be astronomical.
Right.
Um, I wonder how it talks.
Like, it must be constantly running?
No, as soon as the, as, as soon as the, I would assume, as soon as the.
The arm goes.
Arm goes out, that's when it starts recording, front and back.
Right, and then once it closes, but then once it's recorded, it's a live feed directly to a police department?
Well, I think that's.
I think the driver still would probably have to report it.
I guess the little logistical part would have to take place.
Yeah. Because then we'd probably talk to the driver and say, have a violation, record, turn it in.
Like the babe detection.
Hard enough to get both.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor of motion for, please say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay, say nay. Carries five to zero.
Solution five, aligning taxing authority with required local. Massachusetts general laws establishes a required local contribution, which defines a minimum appropriation for education. Therefore, be it resolved with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls for the enactment of legislation that would increase a municipality's levy limit. By the amount of increase of the required local contribution in excess of two point five percent. Granting the municipality the ability to raise local revenues mandated by.
Within the body, give you examples of what the actual increase for the local contribution was versus the two point five levy increase.
So, Gordon, can you get on that further then?
So basically, the. The local contributions outpacing. The municipalities can raise their taxes by, even if you add growth in there, you're probably still, you know. Somewhere between two point five and three, where local contribution. Was going up the last few years in the neighborhood of five or more percent.
So how were we doing that within the levy, though?
That's what they're saying, is that some, some municipalities are not.
They were, those are. Over rides.
You can, you can go the, the, um, these, this is the total.
Stay wide, yeah. What, Pam, do you know our number last year?
How much?
What percentage?
I don't know the percentage. I, I know that, I mean, East Long Meadow's always very generous to the schools and we go, like, I believe it's a good, like, million dollars. Over what has to be given for the minimum, and that's closing as this formula is changing. Sorry, I don't remember.
But we stay within levy every year.
Yes.
We actually don't maximize the levy every year. And our operating budget, what was our percentage last year?
Ours was just around four.
Yeah. So what, what did this change for us then?
Luckily, right now, we're in a good position, but there are municipalities that are struggling to meet their local contribution.
Within the levy.
Right, without going.
This would allow them to go over the levy.
Correct.
Oh, I don't like it. Why aren't they able to make their local funding, though? They have other, they're spending it on the downside? Could we look at it?
Yeah, or it could be that there are costs that they're incurring that year that have just escalated and so it's, you know. You know, as we look, you know, we're we're looking at, we could have asked for. A five point five percent increase last year or, you know, so if towns are looking at that and feeling that, oh, that's definitely needed.
Yeah.
I remember a lot of districts, um, we had that wonderful S R funding, right, for a few years. That was a significant amount of money and a lot of districts. Hired personnel, important personnel that they, you know, but then when the grant goes away, now. Some big decisions were made and if they choose to keep those staff, not that we were in that same boat, but many districts were, so I. I'm assuming maybe some of that is behind what's happening here.
Yep, to uh, Mrs. Blair's point, Desi's now tracking. And asking each district, actually, we just did it today, um, to report. The budget in your operational budget, the budget amount that goes towards social and emotional support. Uh, and so more or less the way we've been doing it is we look at all the positions that are. Set in the budget to provide social emotional support and sort of give us guidance as a district. Um, and we calculate that and that's what we report each year, but that's been the last, at least last two years.
Yeah, a couple of years and I think it was about two million dollars.
Right, over two million.
Right, yeah.
My guess is a lot of districts use S R money.
Yeah.
To fund and increase those positions.
Right.
And and we, it's not something that we didn't think about, we certainly did. But uh, we discussed, you know, what that might look like and. Thankfully, um, last year we were able to incorporate an additional adjustment counselor at Meadow Brook, which. Certainly is being utilized quite a bit, um, that position and thankfully, all three counselors are working really well together. But, yeah, so I think that that lends itself to the escalation you're seeing.
Yeah. Any other discussion? All those in favor of resolution five, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Nay, any abstentions? The motion fails zero to five.
Support of legislation to improve fiscal health of rural districts, all school districts in Massachusetts. Haunting threats to the ability and thus the ability to provide rural students with the same quality of educational opportunity. Sped by students in other parts of the state. Therefore, be it resolved, M A S C urges legislature to pass. Legislation encompassing all recommendations from the Legislative Commission on the Fiscal Health of Rural Schools Report, a sustainable future for rural schools.
And rural schools face similar concerns as urbans. And they don't have the funding to support them. Especially when it comes to like technology, internet access, like we said, we'll have high speed internet in all rural locations and things of that nature.
This would help, you're saying?
Potentially, I mean, I haven't read the full commission on fiscal health. Based on some of the things that they're citing up above.
They're not benefiting from the Student Opportunity Act.
Same way.
Where urban districts have benefited um. Quite considerably from the Student Opportunity Act, and so they're trying to balance the that out.
And there's some areas of rural Massachusetts also have significant levels of poverty as well.
Hmm, sure. Any other discussions? All those in favor of resolution six, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? That carries five to zero.
And seven, will be adjusting chapter seventy aid for inflation, whereas chapter seventy of general laws provides a structure for allocation of school aid. Based on the foundation budgets that reflects the needs and costs for Massachusetts school districts. Or be it resolved that M A S C calls on the Massachusetts Legis- Legislature to advance legislation mandating inflation index catch-ups to chapter seventy. Foundation aid that fully accounts for realized inflation that has occurred since the passage of the Student Opportunity Act. For the resolve, M A S C work with the Massachusetts Legislature to ensure in future years where realized inflation is above the four point five. Inflation caps, subsequent years, catch-ups are made to chapter seventy aid and that realized inflation is used in the formulas to calculate. Chapter seventy eight in perpetuity.
Isn't it all political anyway? And can we mandate how they increase it every year, a future legislature?
They have capped it, though, at the four point five annual inflation rate. Last two years, that's been well over.
The inflation has been funded four point five percent?
They've only um, increased it by four point five percent, that's the cap. Two years ago, we did, last year, not too much.
Right, I don't know, I don't care, change anything. Uh, all's in favor of resolution number seven, please say aye.
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 A, say nay. Here's five zero.
Eight, equitable funding for non-regional school districts with high transportation costs, whereas many non-regional school districts face. Significant financial burdens due to the extensive transportation costs and longer routes required to serve their students. Be it resolved that the state recognizes the financial challenges faced by non-regional school districts. Due to their higher transportation costs and longer routes, the state acknowledges that non-regional school districts should have access. To regional school, regional districts where costs are extraordinary. A special fund shall be established to provide financial assistance to regional schools with higher transportation costs. Ordinary roots relief fund.
I don't think we have any of those in East Long Meadow.
This came from, this came from the.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm saying we wouldn't benefit from it, so we would just be paying for it.
Mm hmm, right.
But don't they have, I mean, the kids from these districts, they don't pay for the bus?
They certainly could. And so the. Rider. The longer routes, basically, is the issue, so.
The regionals, the regional.
Non-regional.
Non-regional.
Regional already get additional uh, transportation funding, you know, this asks for additional funding from the state for those that have long routes. Or wide routes, I guess.
Plymouth is a good example.
Yeah. Geographically, yeah. But, yeah, so as I said, I don't think we would. So we would be paying for those. All in favor of that? So all of their resolution rate, please say aye. Please say nay.
Hey.
Nay, that's.
Two nine, MSBA grants evaluation for chapter seventy four, whereas chapter seventy four vocational, technical and agricultural high schools incur higher costs. To build chapter seventy four educational training spaces. Therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the Massachusetts Legislature and MSBA to create and evaluate. Tiered system to separately assess the cost of one elementary, two comprehensive high schools. And three vocational, technical and agricultural schools resulting to true cost reimbursement for each school category.
Probably makes sense.
Mm hmm.
Any discussion? All in favor, oh, somebody, no. Resolution number nine, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Where's the middle schools?
Ah, good question.
I mean, it's not gonna change my vote, but they don't mention middle.
Are there vocational middle school?
About like the tiering, it was like elementary, high school, vocational, technical.
Well, and it's comprehensive high schools too, it's not.
Yeah.
High schools.
Maybe it's a different tiering system.
Yeah.
Mention in capacity in chapter seventy four vocational and technical programs. Whereas chapter seventy four vocational and technical schools in Massachusetts are experiencing unprecedented applications for admission. Students from their sending districts are being waitlisted. Be it resolved that the Massachusetts. Capacity at the current chapters of schools and work with districts that lack access to the technical schools to create programs.
I mean, we should have more vocational schools, I think, right?
I would say yes. Yep.
All those in, resolution number ten, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, hey. This zero. Good, thank you, Amy, for those. Good luck.
Thanks, Amy.
Have a nice trip to the Cape. Water might be a little cold, but.
Yeah.
You're tough, so. Okay, we have discussion of policy, K H B advertising on school district property.
Back it's, uh, you have the. K H B uh, policy on advertising on school district policy, or excuse me, district property and um. Pretty much it prohibits any advertising, although it does allow for exceptions to be made by the school committee. The question came up regarding. Is the school committee allowed to um, be selective in. How if they actually allow for exceptions, can they be selective specifically with regard to. Um, advertisers who either are not aligned with the district mission or. Um, are in contrast to, say, items um, that are prohibited by the uh, district code of conduct. And um. Attorney Hughes uh, gave us this uh, recommendation where it looks like. The um, actual case studies that uh, he pulled. Communicate that if we go or if the school committee decides to allow advertising, then it becomes somewhat of a public. Form for freedom of speech, therefore, the recommendation would be to not allow any advertising as the. At least a percentage of the policy currently indicates.
How then, because I know, how then did it start? Because it went back to our previous town manager granting this?
Um, so you have two.
The recreation department on non-school properties.
Correct, the town manager did allow for.
We, the town manager has no jurisdiction to allow signage on school property. The school committee has sole jurisdiction.
But wasn't then the process that banners were going to Donna and Don?
They shouldn't be up, there there should be no banner banners.
I think we're gonna have a. Big fight in our hands.
From people that were breaking school policy?
If they thought what they were doing was in alignment with the policy, but that's what people thought they were.
Didn't ask us.
At least from what we've been told, um. The director of uh, recreation has been um, letting all booster groups know.
Now.
Um, this, this is not something that's allowed on school property and so um, she has asked them to take.
I'm pretty sure those signs weren't approved by the director of recreation. Would that be a fair statement?
No.
They were approved by the director.
I think going back a number of years, we would have to.
The one we just pulled off?
I didn't say that one.
Well, that's what I mean.
Not the only organization who is using them as a revenue source and.
It's against policy and that's, it's for this exact reason. It's not that we're against fundraising, we're just against guns being displayed on our fences. Don't want it done anymore, yeah. So we have the attorney that's giving our advice, it's a uh, free, free speech issue. Either allow all or none.
How does that work with other forms of advertisement?
Like what?
Our schools. Our yearbooks aren't sponsored.
Yearbooks um, are in, within the policy are allowed to um, have advertising in the yearbooks they can sell.
So how then does that differ? In terms of freedom of speech?
Um, he talks about it in.
I, I mean, I just think it's gonna put us in a very precarious situation, especially when you think about the erection of the four dugouts now at Berchleynt.
Uh, that's not even, I don't even, that's, at no point did they say we must. Put up signs on our fences to put up these dugouts. No one ever said anything.
That's a part of their fundraising.
Sarah, they could be outselling, I don't, I don't know, it's not anything to do with us, though.
I believe that there were processes that they thought they were doing right by.
They didn't, they were wrong.
They, or they were misinformed.
They're still wrong.
It's okay.
Can't change the.
Regardless, right?
No, it's not okay.
No, I'm saying like, well, whoever was right or wrong doesn't matter as much as the signs are dead, they're coming dead, like, it's not.
Permanently up.
Right, I understand.
During the time of sporting events.
Okay. So it's going forward.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, right, but it's been consistent already. It's nothing's gonna change, we're not gonna change the policy tonight. The policy is what it is. And in order to put something on school top, you have to ask the school, like, I don't know.
Then I think we have to go back to that meeting where this happened. I, I.
Or what happened?
Where the recreation department was brought into the conversation, because these folks didn't just start. Soliciting funds from individuals, sponsorship.
Yes, they did.
Greg, I guarantee you if we went back to that meeting, we wouldn't hear that.
Meeting, I'm sorry, sir, the dugout one?
No, I'm talking about going back to like the meeting where this Hannoverms first was opened up and that was on the town. Manager, town council side, years ago.
I knew nothing about it if it happened, because I totally disagree with that. School property is under sole jurisdiction of the school committee, not, the town manager has no authority.
Am I wrong that this came back around from like when Mary was here?
I, I think the town manager did approve it for town property, not school property.
Yeah, center of town, heritage park.
The unfortunate thing is, is governing that is challenging or leasing it, I guess, in this case.
So then what hap- I'm just asking, so then what happens um, for the instances of the Spartan Spring?
Can, we can do in-house advertising. Is that what you're saying?
You, you can't do, if you're putting it on, so the distinction to answer your question around um. Uh, school programs and so forth, um, the second paragraph towards the bottom. So you.
That's half looked down, yeah.
The distinction, however, is that sponsor publications are considered non-public forums that are part of the curriculum and thus might reasonably perceive. To bear the imprimatur of the school. Um, here communications on fences of its property, which I didn't read all the case studies there, but uh, here are case references. Here communications on fences of its property which are viewable to the public are likely distinguishable from non-public forums such as school publications. Those school publications like the yearbook would be excluded from.
I'm saying like when we run things like the Spartan Spring and we have sponsorship up during those events, would that no longer be eligible either? Because now we're advertising, like I go back to the days of four run three, didn't they have sponsorship things up at the schools as well? When you like pass through, wasn't that run by them? Wasn't Archie ran through four one, one, three or four run three? I'm just saying this is going to set off a domino if we're really adhering to this.
Sarah, are you comfortable with the sign that was on the fence that day?
No, I think.
So our attorney is saying you cannot discriminate and say you can't put that sign up, but you can put that sign up. You can't, it's free speech, you're, you're violation of.
Not, I don't think I'm understanding that then. How is accepting funds from someone on the basis of, for instance, a code of conduct? Speech. Someone has to come to one of these recreation departments and say, I would like to sponsor you. The recreational facility or board would have the authority to say yes or no. We're not saying yes or no.
Yeah.
So how does that involve us direct?
Put a sign up on our fence. That's it. They can sponsor him, they can hear, here's a thousand dollars, all yours.
I'm just saying.
Just put a sign on the fence.
Okay, I just.
This is exactly why, though. This was a complaint that came from citizens. That they walked by, they're not football players, they're not football families, they don't wanna see it.
I don't disagree with that complaint. But I'm just saying it's going to have a much broader impact than just football. A much broader impact, including things like the Spartan Spring. Including even.
Didn't even have, they had it on town property this year, it wasn't even on.
Well, what happens then when we do National Night Out? And advertisements are hit, hung up for that, what happens when?
Are there advertised?
Band concerts.
What's up for that for advertisements?
There's nobody puts up advertisements on those.
On each of the tents?
Um, the fireworks, we allowed uh, thank you to the sponsors of the fireworks, but I don't know that National Night Out, we've done.
Or uh, what's the other one, concerts?
Well, unfortunately, everybody loses now, because somebody went too far, Sarah, that's where I'm at.
I'm just saying, like, I don't know then if we have.
Nobody can do it anymore. Nobody can do it anymore. Somebody went too far and now nobody can do it. That's it.
Gordon, can I ask you a question about something that you said a moment ago about. You know, advertising of items that are not in line with our code of conduct. Does that piece come in at all?
Oh, so that was a specific question, because we thought, but as a school department, you have a specific mission. And then your code of conduct even becomes more specific because it prohibits certain things. So that was the question that I had put to our attorneys and. Attorney Hughes is saying that unfortunately, we can't discriminate based on our mission and our code of conduct.
Oh.
Yeah.
Got it.
I, the hope was we could, right?
So what's the teeth here? I mean, if somebody puts a sign up.
What's, what's ramifications? Somebody just goes, somebody goes to take it down.
Or anybody can do it, yeah. Anybody can do their things they're not permitted to do. And so this would not permit sign putting up. So if somebody puts a sign up, it's not permitted. So, yeah, it could be taken down.
It would just.
Yeah, yeah.
Then that would just, what happened in this case?
But I think the problem is becoming that. Recreational organizations have accepted donations in order to have. And that sponsorship of the team. So the sign is going up during an event where that team is using our facilities. So now they're in a pinch where they've accepted funds. And I disagree, Greg. I think there was some confusion here, because I think some of them were bringing their banners to the rec department as instructor.
We didn't instruct them to do that. And I'm, I'm pretty sure the rec department has not given permission for those signs to go up on.
I didn't say all, I'm saying, and I'm saying.
These specific ones that we didn't.
Do then when we allowed the Spartan Sprint to be run here. We were, and we're guilty of it then for national night out or the fireworks or all these things. So there are gonna be ramifications. I'm just saying, we. Need to figure out a better solution than just saying nothing.
Rotary Club always asks permission.
I'm, you come here and ask for that?
They always put it in their, their request to use the grounds.
So what happens if that starts to change and what they put up all of a sudden includes an arms dealer? How are we gonna know then? We've never seen.
You can no longer.
Now, now we stick to the policy tight. We have to stick to it, Sarah. It's, it's A or B, there's no middle. You have to allow them all, in which the sign that was up, we could say nothing about. We allow none.
But this also says that we have. The right to say yes or no.
No, it doesn't.
Our policy does.
Well, right, but he's, he's saying.
The attorney's saying where policies.
The policy, yes.
That's too bad that it has to.
There are no other policies locally that we can look at? Other school committees?
I mean, you.
I think other school, I think most schools allow advertising. But I don't, haven't seen any gun advertisements on any other schools yet. And I think if they run into that issue, they would probably take it down.
Any other towns right surrounding us that have four gun shops right in town? Or would Easton that'll be the only one in a very hyper local area?
But it's not just that, and you know, I don't, I'm not, I'm not. Bashing any gun shops. It's a, it's a valid business. It's a legitimate business. They have a right to make a living.
I wasn't bashing it. I'm.
I know, it's, I'm just, I'm trying to be cool, because I sound like I'm bashing it, but it's the subject matter, but also, you know, cigarettes, we wouldn't want to advertise. Um, you know.
Being.
Yeah, any of those.
Abyss.
Alcohol, absolutely.
If we can't say no to, to some things and not everything, we have to say no, no to everything. I mean, it's.
That would include like when you pull up schools and there's fairs sponsored or Justin's school rings or. I mean, those are real signs that you see on school property. I'm just saying, like, if we're that literal, then I think we're gonna have a very, very, very big impact on way more than some of the.
I don't think we're gonna have that big of an impact. How much are they getting to put those signs up?
They get quite a pretty penny for that, for those signs. They do. They get.
And what are they using the money for? What's the money for?
What do you think helps purchase those dugouts?
Coats and stuff?
No.
This is the football team we're talking about.
But it also impacts other organizations who do the exact same thing. There are banners that go up on multiple fields throughout this town. I'm just saying, like.
Can't bring a banner to your house and stick it up on your house, because I want to. It's the same thing on the.
Things explain, though, that that was not articulated to individuals. I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I think they did ask. I think they got bad information. Now, that's a funding source that we are cutting off from local organizations that I'm just saying. We need to be aware of, and we now need to look more critically at all the other things that are placed on school property. It's not just as simple as no banners are going up. It's way more than that. And who's gonna be responsible now for going around and checking this? The principals?
However, Sarah, the alternative is that sign goes back up. You're good with that?
I didn't say that. I am a.
It's A or B, Sarah.
I don't.
Well, it's not, you can't go against the attorney. The attorney says it doesn't work.
I, we can keep this conversation going and seek advice from other local school committees who are allowing advertising. There are other school districts in our very area where advertising is allowed.
I have personally have never been a proponent of advertising to youth on public grounds, so I'm, I'm in favor of the policy as it is. So, but I'm one person. So. What else? What do you want to do?
I agree with Sarah that maybe looking into what local, other local school districts do in terms of their policy would be a helpful thing to do, but. Yeah, I wish there were a little bit more of a gray area on here to. Would help, would help us.
The one thing I would say, you mentioned sort of class rings and yearbooks and so forth. That's a vendor that we bring in. See, they're gonna identify themselves. I think that's a little bit different than advertising, but certainly. The school committee would like to, us to look at districts around us. We can do that.
And did the attorney know that these were not permanent fixtures?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
I think somewhere in here he talks about temporary banners.
So if we vote today. And say no banners, I mean, yes, the banners are okay. That means the banner that was currently taken down gets a lot, gets allowed to be put back up.
This requires a vote.
Allow banners or don't allow banners, and you cannot differentiate on the subject matter.
No, I, no, I understand we can't.
Yes, that one could go back up. If we allow signs, that's.
Tonight, though.
But, but for those that are receiving funds. Or receiving contributions, could we not put rules and regulations then for them to be more dis- to, to be more discerning in. Who they receive funds.
That's where I'm lost too. Like, we're not accepting the funds. We aren't.
Which is even worse. So we're advertising, it's not worse, it's just as bad, because we're advertising for guns and we're not even getting the funds for it.
I'm not saying the guns. No, I'm talking about the guns.
Banner right now. I'm not talking about the one.
That's everything.
A banner being put up.
Yeah.
That was somebody's school is receiving funds for that banner to be allowed to be put up. Could we not put more controls over the organizations that are receiving funds, thus be able to then restrict. Certain kind of things that we just don't want to be on the.
Right, and why?
Like, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want the guns.
I, I would say to that, that the boosters would be under the same.
We don't have that legal opinion, though. Are boosters under the same?
Uh, but, but, um, check, is it not amendment one? Yeah, the first amendment. The first amendment applies to all Americans in all groups.
But an organization has the right to accept money or not from advertisers. So that's what I'm saying, like, as an organization, I have the right to solicit you for.
Yeah, but we can't make the football organization take money from certain people. We can't do it, can we?
I'm not saying make them.
They did.
Your, but we can also set parameters, I think, and give guidance as to what will be permitted.
And when they get by the guidance that we gave them, what do we do? We say no vapes and they go and they get, I don't know.
Then we say that has.
Alternatives.
Because say no vape.
Well, no, Sarah, we can't say that. That's the whole point. That's the crux of it. You cannot say.
When.
That sign down.
Things are approved by the school committee, so we could make an.
Yes, we're gonna change this. No, we're, this, this policy is not good anymore. What's the difference is the, is the new thing?
That's what you're saying.
That's what the attorney is saying.
I. I don't know.
I can be, uh, one item that's missed here is that. We've had very few groups come before the school committee to request put out, putting out any kind of advertising. And so I think it's truly what I was saying is that. Somehow they're bypassing the school committee entirely.
Right.
And getting approved somewhere.
No, we don't know that, though, Gordon.
We don't know that, but, but they're not coming here, so one element, correct, one element of the policy is not being followed. Which that should certainly be widely communicated that any advertising. Every incident of advertising or request for advertising should come to the school committee. That's what the policy basically is saying.
We could completely ignore the legal advice we are given and say, we are not, we do not. Advertise for guns, vapes, cannabis, or alcohol. We won't, we won't allow it.
And wait for the legal challenge? Especially because we're on record here with our legal advice.
I mean.
We certainly have that right. However, the signs will come again.
Uh-huh.
And then what?
Yeah.
I know that they would come again.
They came. Do we know how, where they, I mean, do we know where they came from or who, who solicited this vendor or how this happened? Sign popped up and that was it?
A lot.
A sign came, it was placed on during one of the Saturday rec games, was placed on the athletic. Fields fence, which is a school department fence, and then the complaint came to us.
So, but so they didn't necessarily receive funds or anything. Did somebody just put the sign up?
No, it's.
I understand they, they did.
Somebody did.
The thing, there was a donation and this was thanking the sponsor.
Does the rec department, I'm legitimately asking this, which is the rec department pay us a rental fee when, when rec, when those fields are used for rec purposes?
They pay it an annual.
No, they, they only pay for custodial overtime.
So when the football field is used, there's no cost?
No, the policy is such that.
What if there was a cost?
It's irrelevant.
Why?
Same policy.
But.
Because we cannot tell them to take that sign down if we allow signs. That's why it matters.
But I'm saying if they are paying for the use of the facility. Then isn't that under their jurisdiction at that moment and not necessarily ours?
Because the same citizens are gonna walk by and say, that's public grounds and there's a sign of a gun, they don't know. So I would say no to that, you know? And it's the policy of the, um, the school itself. You know?
What school itself?
The school has a policy for the grounds, and so that's what dictates what happens on the grounds. It's not like. Because somebody paid rent for it, they can change the policy for the stadium.
This is a tough one.
So then I'm gonna go, so then lacrosse. They don't have any sponsorship banners when they come and do their big tournament here? I'm just saying, we have a lot of things that people use this property for. That we are then gonna have to really narrow that scope, because we host that lacrosse tournament where colleges come. For recruitment purposes every spring, don't we?
Uh, we haven't in a while, but.
We did for what, four years in a row or?
In a row, yep.
And I'm guaranteeing there was some kind of power raid sign or something up. I just don't get the black and white making it to be right.
We'll go to member districts and, and see what policies they may have and bring it back.
Yeah, so can we table this one out?
Yeah. Is that possible?
Sure.
Okay. Sarah, good. We'll do that. We'll talk about it. Good discussions. Just getting warmed up too.
I'm kidding.
Uh, hey, uh, we have acceptance of a smart window unit air conditioner for Mountain View School. Pam, if you have that, yeah?
Yes, in your packet from Principal Elaine Santanello is requesting the school committee. Approve this air conditioner. And the history behind that is that there are air conditioners in each of the classrooms at Mountain View School and most of our classrooms. And this. Grade five, Mr. Tyler's air conditioner died at the end of the school year. And it was after the date where purchases were allowed. As you know, it's always crazy at the end of the year. Over the summer, also his, personally, his central air died, so he had to, he. In, bought this air conditioner to use personally, but then his air conditioning got fixed, so he no longer needs it. It was a very nice device, so he thought he would donate it to the school. If we don't accept this. And, and it is in his window right now, but if you choose not to accept it, we would take it out, but then we would have to purchase one. So my recommendation is to accept it. This is not a precedent setting.
Well, in the, in the letter, it says for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So is this?
I'm sorry, did I miss that there?
No, no, this letter.
Oh, that one that he wrote.
So does that mean it's conditional for this year and then we are buying a new one or is this like for purpose?
Donation.
No, once it's a donation, it is ours. I, I realize what you're saying.
It says, I would like to donate this for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. That doesn't read to me like, I just wanna make sure, like, if we're accepting this, like, we're accepting it. And it's not like conditional upon employment, it's not conditional upon next academic year. That make.
Those are valid points.
You may at least get clarification before acceptance.
Or the vote could be that you would accept it. Contingent upon facts, that it is a, yeah, permanent donation, yes.
Because then. We would have to have it uninstalled, buy a new one and have it reinstalled.
It says, uh, from Mrs. Santanella with Spin Mountain View School would be pleased to accept this A C unit. For future benefit to our students.
Right, but his letter doesn't say that.
But that could be interpreted as he'd like to donate it this year. This is, it's your donation, but we can ask.
Clarification.
And make the vote contingent on a B for it. Okay. Take a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to accept no unit air conditioners around the school purchased by Mr. Tyler, a grade five classroom teacher.
Motion made by Aunt Nella.
Second.
Second, my Amy.
Add conditional upon.
Yeah, please. That up to. Conditional, that's a permanent.
As long as it's forever.
Motion made by Aunt Nella, like.
Second.
Second, sorry, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, that carries five to zero, please.
We needed a.
I passed.
Find out. Remember?
If you go back thirty years, there'll be some box in the window. Doesn't work. Here forever. Okay, we have an acceptance of the craft supplies donated by the Mudge family to Miss Emmett at Mountain View School. Programs.
Yep, so that's it. Yeah, Elaine Santanella, principal, Mountain View, is again asking for the school committee to. Accept these donations for the gifted and talented program.
Was this something the teacher needed or was this something that the family just decided to donate because they had as extra?
I honestly don't know that answer, but I would think that if it was products that they did not want, they wouldn't be asking to accept them. But again, I can ask that question for you.
Yeah, I just would like to be mindful of, is this a purchase that should be budgeted within our. Budget? I mean, these aren't, I mean, an air conditioner, this is another like almost five hundred dollars here.
Ask that question, so again, it can be contingent upon.
No, no, it's not contingent. I just am curious, like, how then? Are we allocating funds? Like, if this is for a project, how would the project have been otherwise funded if not for the donation and the generosity of said family?
Take a motion to accept the donation, please.
I make a motion to accept the craft supplies donated.
Motion made by Amy. It's another discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose nay. We don't have to do the final one. We're gonna miss. Again, we'll, okay, the final.
Second.
Motion made by Sarah, second by William to table. Item seven point six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. The motion carries five to zero.
We have one more before it's meeting before the.
Okay, do we?
I don't know. I think that's.
Oh, it came before, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, the Monday. So.
We should talk politics next meeting.
Schools are coming.
Great, I've been prepared to speak. Manny, be ready. You're gonna be on, right? Okay, if we have no other. Business, which I don't believe we do, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please. Motion made by Sarah, second by Aunt Nella. Any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose nay. carries five to zero. Thank you.